Okay, let's call to an order Clayton City Council meeting for October 15, 2019. Let the record reflect that all council members are present. If everyone would please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Then we'll go into our consent calendar, and I understand that there's a small correction to 4A. I think there's a date that we're approving the minutes, not for today, but for October 1. So with that correction, is there any comment on any of the consent items? I don't have any speaker cards.
Move approval.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes unanimously. It takes us into recognitions and presentations. We have none tonight, and we'll go into reports. We don't have a report from Planning Commission on Trails and Landscaping Committee. Do we have a report from City Manager? Okay, so then we'll go to City Council reports. Mr. Diaz, would you like to start?
I just have two items. One is that we met with the City Manager relative to a number of issues on planning for the earlier closed session. And then on October 10th, I chaired the 26th Annual Chief Special Agents Association Law Enforcement Appreciation Awards Luncheon. We honored 18 officers from throughout the Bay Area, giving them various awards from Community Relations Award all the way to the, what we characterize as the Valor Award. That was the most interesting one of them all. It was awarded to two highway patrol officers. The landscape of law enforcement is changing. These two officers were on patrol on the freeway, and there was a car that was driving on the freeway. When they approached it, they could see that the driver had passed out, but it was a Tesla, and it was on automatic. So the question is, how do you stop it? That was the reason how they were awarded this. They ended up having to call for a traffic buck. I don't know if any of you have been on the freeway when the highway patrol goes back and forth across the lane to stop all the traffic from behind. Then they had to get in front of the vehicle and stop it. What I didn't know, but these Teslas have a, I guess, a sensing device that ends up, if you get in front of it at the right point, you can actually stop the vehicle from moving forward. Anyway, they saved intoxicated drivers' life. They saved the life of a number of people that would have been potentially hit by that vehicle driving down the freeway. Anyway, so that was our top award, and two officers from Redwood City received that. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Wolf.
Okay, I attended the Mayor's Conference in Antioch, also the closed session for the City Council. Worked two very long days at Oktoberfest, as most of us did, on the 5th and 6th. And the 6th, I did the cleanup crew, which was quite an experience after a lot of people drinking beer and doing what they do. Did quite a bit of email and talking to constituents last week. Also sent a note off to Senator Glazer, congratulating him on his bill that got signed about no smoking in the state parks. The governor signed that. Also had our weekly meeting with our City Manager. And I also want to bring to the attention of people that coming up on the 26th, there is the Ted McDavid Bachi Tournament, Memorial Tournament for Ted McDavid, who was one of our Making a Difference winners. That's on the 26th at our Bachi Courts downtown. You can find out more information on Eventbrite. And that is all.
Great, thank you. Vice Mayor Pierce.
Yes. I attended the Regional Planning Committee of the Association of Bay Area Governments. We received a report on the Horizons Research Project. The Housing Methodology Working Group will start meeting this coming Friday. That is to work out the methodology for assigning the regional housing needs assessment numbers to the Bay Area. It is a fairly small group appointed by the President of ABAG. This will be the third round of RENA numbers that I have been on this committee, so it should be an interesting one because our big number coming down from the state is probably going to be double what it's been in the past. And how we apportion that around the entire Bay Area will be a challenge. Also attended the Mayor's Conference in Antioch, participated in City Manager Candidate Interviews, was down at Oktoberfest through the permitting stages, helping my husband, who was in charge of that, and a Clayton Historical Society Board Meeting. And I will note that the Clayton Historical Society will be having their annual meeting on November 7th, that's a Thursday evening, in this room. And following the business meeting at 7 o'clock, there will be a presentation on John Marsh, who was the first, quote, "American settler" in East County, and built the Marsh Stone, John Marsh Stone House that's out there, and has just been made part of a, it's on the National Register of Historic Places. Anyway, there's a great program out there this Saturday as well, but we will have a presentation on that, and that's open to the public and free. Also had a meeting of Transpac, which is our Central County Transportation Planning Committee, talking about our expenditure plan for the proposed ballot measure for next March. We approved it. Attended the Contra Costa Association of Realtors Elected Officials Reception. It's always good getting together with our Realtor community to hear what's going on and be apprised of their concerns. And had the, met with the Association of Bay Area Governments Administrative Committee jointly with the Metropolitan Transportation Commission's Planning Committee. There again, talking about the Horizons Project and Plan Bay Area 2050, and how the RENA process will play out. One other note about ABAG, there is an election this year for President and Vice President. There have been two people who applied for Vice President, so there will be a mailed ballot coming out from the Clerk of ABAG, and Janet will receive that. And in order to vote, we each need to go in and get our ballot from Janet, fill it out in her presence, and hand it back to her, and put it in the sealed envelope so that she can mail them back. And all of this will happen before our next council meeting. So I would tell you that they are going to be mailed on Friday, so starting Monday or Tuesday of next week, we each need at some point to go into City Hall and place our vote on that ballot. There was an uncontested presidential seat, and that will remain Jesse Arican of the City of Berkeley. But there are two candidates for the Vice President's seat, which will be taking, they're each two-year terms, so.
What cities are the Vice Presidents?
The Vice President candidates are Belia Ramos, who is a supervisor in Napa County, who also serves on the Executive Board, and Glenn Hendricks from Sunnyvale, who is a council member. So if you would all get in there and place your vote, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Juan.
I spent quite a bit of time just with emails and communications with residents, and then, like I think everyone else, I spent a lot of time at Oktoberfest, a small amount volunteering, and the rest of the time imbibing.
And it was great.
And it was great. It was a great time had by all. The kids had fun, the rides were great, and it was a lot of fun. That's it.
Great, thank you. So for me, I attended the Mayor's Conference in Antioch on Thursday, October 3rd. Also attended, like all the other, all of my other colleagues, the closed session Friday, all day, closed session on Friday, October 4th, with City Manager Candidate Interviews, and then also spent two very long days at the Oktoberfest. And as packed as Oktoberfest was this year, I want to also recognize it is wonderful to see several hundred volunteers come out, and you know, those events don't take place without volunteers, so it's a great showing for our community from that perspective. So with that, we don't have any other reports. We move on to public comment on non-agenda items. So this is a portion of the meeting, when any member of the public can speak on any item that's not on tonight's agenda. Every member has up to three minutes. I do have three speaker cards, but if anyone else would like to speak, just fill out a speaker card and hand it over to a City Clerk. Ann Stanaway?
Are we live? Oh, good. Ann Stanaway, 1553 Haviland Place, Clayton. Tonight, accessory dwelling units. Yes, they're coming. And who are they going to benefit? Are they going to benefit your mother-in-law? Are they going to benefit your grandmother? No. They are going to benefit the homeless. They are going to benefit the low-income. And why is that going to happen? It's because of the loan structure that's out there. They are actually going to give low-interest and forgivable loans to people who will house the homeless and low-income people. Now, why are we worried about that? Well, a full 76% of the homeless in California are discernibly mentally ill. That's frightening. And then we have the low-income people. Now, why are they low-income? And exactly how are they going to pay the modest rates that we're going to be asking for our accessory dwelling units, which by the way, are rent-controlled? Happy days! So accessory dwelling units are not your granny's panacea for her retirement. They have nothing to do with that. They have to do with the state of California shunting the homeless and low-income people off into your backyards. And if you think that's terrible, take a gander at the privacy issues. These people come equipped with a bevy of government officials that come and visit them and make sure that they're taken care of, and make sure that the environment that they're in is conducive to them getting better. And what do these government officials do? They come into your backyard in order to visit their clients, and guess what they do? They look at what's going on in your backyard. And when they're not in your backyard, they're looking at the neighbors' backyards as well. Privacy, no, no. You're just, you're talking no privacy, you're talking high-density, and you're talking high-risk rentals. Thank you.
Thank you. Glenn Miller.
My name is Glenn Miller. I reside in Peacock Creek. I am here to report on the progress, and for the most part, the final resolution of a number of landscape maintenance districts and jihad issues that I have spoken to you and to the City Manager in the past. More specifically, I'm here to praise the efforts of interim City Manager Joe Sabranti and Jim Walburton, the Maintenance Manager. For the first time in 10-plus years, I have noted the LMT scope items neglected and in some instances completely ignored, but since I have brought the attention to the current City Management and the current Maintenance Manager, these items have been resolved all of a sudden. It has been amazing, it's been wonderful to see, and they really should be praised. This is much different than the times that I brought these issues to this council, both publicly and to the City Management privately, where these issues were just completely ignored. As for the jihad, most recently in April, I noted that work had not been done in 10-plus years in a specific area in Peacock Creek. The response I received was, one, not our job, not true, did not know what I was talking about, and finally, I was accused of not telling the truth. But that is all history. Thanks to Councilmember Juan and Councilmember Wolf, who put together a meeting with Mr. Walburton, and we actually went out, and it took us 10 minutes to identify these areas, and it was pretty obvious they hadn't been done in 10-plus years. So the good news is that now landscape areas have been addressed all the way. It's not on a time-weighted basis, it's on a task-weighted basis. In other words, they finish the work. They don't give a damn how much time it takes, they do it, and they do it right, and they are to be praised. And second of all, I'm happy to report that as of today, and you can come down and look at it, they found the swell. After 10 years, and a guy with a chainsaw and a big machete whacking the heck out of it, they took care of it, and they're now doing the rest of the area in Peacock Creek. And they are, those folks are to be praised for taking care of the work, and I'm ashamed of the people that have been around for 10-plus years that didn't address these things. Thank you.
Thank you. Roger Peterson.
Yeah, my name's Roger Peterson. I live up in Windmill Canyon on Raven Place. And as I go up Keller Ridge, I go past gates on either side for the Oakhurst Country Club. And if you go up there, you'll notice that there are pillars that hold up those gates. And if you recall about 10 years ago, I don't remember the exact timeframe, but metals were in high demand, and copper was being ripped off, and street lamp, cable was being ripped off and sold for scrap. Well, at the same time, they ripped off all the Oakhurst medallions. And every time I drive by that gate, those gates, I see four pillars full of holes that haven't been filled or painted over, or filled or anything, and it's an eyesore. So I wrote a letter to the Oakhurst Country Club just over the weekend, and pointing out to them that this eyesore exists, and also suggesting a method for solving it without metal. Years ago, I was involved in a company that was in the plastics business, and I thought, you know, you could just take a mold of these Oakhurst medallions and do some injection molding, make some plastic or silicon replacements, and put them in there, you know, and they'd look just as good as the old metal ones. But then I got to thinking, well, maybe they don't all belong to Oakhurst Country Club. Maybe they belong to the city. And since I saw that there was an agenda item about the park up there and rehabbing the park that's one block from my house, I thought, well, I thought I'd bring this to your attention, and maybe you can do something about rehabbing all these pillars around that have holes in them, and have the holes in them for the last 17 years. So it's, it was good to hear about action being taken in Peacock Creek, that things got done, maybe, and I'll leave these pictures with you, I printed them off.
Thank you. If you want to leave them with our City Manager, maybe you can connect afterwards to figure out if some of them are city property or if they're all Oakhurst. Thank you very much. I don't have, I think I have it here. I have it here, yeah. I don't have any other speaker cards. If anyone else would like to address the council, come on up. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. We'll move on to public hearings. We have none. Takes us into action items, item 9A, which is consideration of establishing a City of Clayton Legislative Policy. I think we have a report from City Manager, Mr. Sabranti.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The item before you considers establishing a City of Clayton Legislative Policy, as you mentioned. State lawmakers in Sacramento are continually tasked with addressing a wide variety of issues. In response, lawmakers propose state senate and assembly bills that can become laws and can potentially impact Clayton. For example, in 2019 alone, the state considered over 2,500 different bills. Although most of these bills did not or do not significantly impact Clayton, some do. So in order for Clayton to be able to voice timely support or opposition to bills being considered, Clayton may wish to establish and adopt a legislative policy. In preparing for tonight and for this report, I considered presenting to you a variety of different options, alternatives for legislative policies, but there are frankly just too many different alternatives for us to consider efficiently in this setting. So in order to better craft a policy that would be specifically crafted specifically for Clayton, tonight I am requesting the selection of two council members to serve on an ad hoc committee to assist staff in drafting a legislative policy that would later come back to the full council for consideration after a draft is put together. With that, as always, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions of staff? Seeing none, let's open up a public comment. I don't have any speaker cards, but if anyone would like to address the council on this item, come on up. Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back. Go ahead, Mr. Miller.
I think this is, you know, it's a good idea to proceed this way, but my suggestion would be that the two council persons should be the ones that have just been elected, so you're not running into politics and election issues in the drafting. I realize you're just drafting legislation, so that there can be some at least continuity as you move forward, because I would assume that something drafted like this might be, might take place and proceed into the election cycle. So I was just thinking that might be something to kind of consider when you consider the people involved.
Thank you. Seeing no one else come to the podium, we'll close public comment and bring it up to the council. And Mr. Sabranti, to be clear, this is about whether or not the city takes a decision on legislation coming out of Sacramento, right? It's not about the council drafting legislation?
Correct, correct. This would be, in fact, in the packet I included two different policies for your consideration that other cities utilize. They're pretty complex policies, frankly. As we discuss it, one of the things that we'll discuss in that ad hoc meeting would be the idea of, well, how detailed do we want to get? If there's 2,500 bills, how many of them do we really want to look at? Do we want to narrow that down to the ones that have just have impact on Clayton, or do we want to look at a wide variety of different issues? So those two cities took a shot at how to pare that down to a reasonable amount. That might be a starting place. Do we want to go down even further than that? As I mentioned in the report, also, we already contract, or actually are a member of the League of Cities, who do a lot of the hard work for us to identify bills that are of impact to us. So all of that would be discussed, and a approach would be considered, crafted, and then brought back to council for consideration, rather than just struggling with something that could take an hour or two just to get a draft together. We could do that heavy lifting in a conference room setting with a couple of council members, and come back to you in open session for a conversation about what we've come up with.
Okay. Any thoughts? Vice Mayor Pierce.
Yeah, sitting on several different county and regional boards, many of them have a simple process, where once a year, they identify what their priorities are legislatively, what they're concerned about, what they've heard might be coming forward, things like that. And they sit down and they put together a legislative policy that gives the manager and the committee members at least a flavor of what they want to address. As the City Manager mentioned, there are thousands of bills every year. You need to narrow it down somehow by saying, these are the things we're concerned about, these are the things we'd like to be able to weigh in on. And then when those come along, staff at least has an idea whether to bother to read them or not. Quite frankly, I don't want my staff worrying particularly about whether we extend daylight savings time year-round. That's really not a big deal to me. I have my personal opinions about it, but I don't think we should waste our staff time on that. Somebody wants to put it on the ballot, I'll vote, but you know, I'm not really worried about spending staff time on things like that. There are so many bills like that, that we don't need to waste our time collectively on. But there are things that may affect local control, or housing policy, or transportation issues. There may be personal safety issues that we need to look at, whatever we feel are important, that we could craft a general statement at the beginning of the year that we could take a look at, and then at least we know whether we even want to bother with some of the bills or not. And the League is a terrific resource for us to use, and they give us a lot of heads-up. The Association of Bay Area Governments, which is mostly small cities in membership, also does a legislative agenda as well, that differs considerably, by the way, from the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. Some of theirs we might want to look at as well, if it means more money in our pocket here in the city. But I would suggest that that's something we could do, and whoever wants to be on the committee could be fleshing that out. I'm happy to serve if we want to outline how we would go about setting that policy, but it would certainly be my recommendation that the entire council set that legislative advocacy policy.
Okay. Councilmember Diaz?
Well, let me just ask this. Wouldn't it be the purpose of that policy committee just to be the first screen on this? Right. And then ultimately, the council would vote on that, correct?
Absolutely.
And that's what I sensed as the direction.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I will tell you, and I know we all received them, the letters or the emails from the League on a variety of bills, and asking us to take a position pro or con on them. And maybe that would help facilitate our response to that, as opposed to being very ad hoc, as the way it is now. So I could support that, and would be happy to work along with you on that as well. I want to make a comment. I didn't realize this at first, but the City of Encinitas, the current City Manager of Brentwood was the City Manager down there. And more closer to home, in a past life, believe it or not, I was the founding president of the Encinitas Town Council prior to incorporation. So it was a, it's a very interesting community. Anyway, but they have, I think they have a pretty good outline here on how to approach this.
Okay. Councilmember Juan.
Yeah, I certainly think it's a good idea, so I'm supportive. I think it, doing something like this helps, it helps be more transparent about the things that we're supporting and the things that are important as priorities. So like I said, I'm glad that you had brought it up. It's catalyst from the activity from our last meeting, and so that, I think it's great. I would love to, you know, be a part of that if it's available. I do tend to read a lot of these things just for funsies. So, you know, anyways.
Okay. Councilmember Wolf.
I'm fully in support of the ad hoc committee. Whether to serve or not is a different story. I understand Mr. Miller was saying there, but I think that there should be, to me, some consideration of experience on this ad hoc committee. Seeing as the ad hoc committee is going to just be reporting back to us, and we're going to wind up making the decision anyway, I don't have a problem serving on it, but I think that, being new to this for me, I would lean more towards someone with more experience, yourself, or Julie, or Jim, and Councilmember Juan.
Okay. So I mean, I'm generally supportive of what you're proposing as well. I mean, I do think we have a voice, but we also don't have an unlimited budget, so we do want to focus on things that are important to Clayton. But I think we do want to have fairly simple process, but one that's transparent and one that's all-inclusive. So I'm, and I do agree, in terms of the League, they do provide a lot of information. And I realize that some of the bigger cities are not part of that League, but a lot of the smaller cities are part of it, and I think all Contra Costa cities are part of it too. And I do, we do get a lot of helpful information from them, so they are a great resource. So anyway, so it sounds like we're all in favor of establishing an ad hoc committee, so it sounds like we are just looking to have two people in it, since we can't have more than two.
Well, I would propose that Vice Mayor Pierce and Councilmember Juan... Well, I would propose that Vice Mayor Pierce and councilmember one make up the committee.
Is that a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that. Any other thoughts? Discussion? Okay. So, on that motion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes unanimously, and I think we're on our way. And then, we'll bring it back to the council when ready. Perfect. That moves us then into item 9B, which is consideration of a moratorium on the use of glyphosate, which is commonly called as Roundup. Mr. City Manager, I think you have a report.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. Within the past year, there's been a growing number of government agencies that have reduced or eliminated the use of glyphosate as a weed prevention tool. Although the health effects and risks associated with this product are still under review, staff is recommending a moratorium on the use of glyphosate until spring of 2021. At that time, staff can bring back a consideration item to council to evaluate the status of Clayton's landscaping and perhaps the policies that other cities have taken on, as well as any health risks that we can report on that may have been altered, or any perception of those health risks that have been updated. So, over the next 18 months, staff will be able to utilize a variety of alternative methods in an effort to effectively manage weeds. And I know we have our maintenance manager sitting by, and he may not look that happy about this, because it's going to mean more work, quite frankly. So, some of the methods that we've identified have been hand-pulling weeds, cutting weeds right down to the ground level, use of pre-emergent, perhaps some use of organic weed and grass killers. And then, we're looking into the use of mulch that we would get from tree trimming companies that are honestly just trying to get rid of that stuff. And we can use that on top of some pre-emergent to perhaps slow down the growth of weeds in certain areas, potentially in street medians or other possible locations. So, tonight, just to recap, what we're recommending is really a wait-and-see approach, where we have an 18-month or more, maybe sometime in the spring of 2021, come back to council after we can see what the impacts of stopping the use of this particular product is, after we can see what the health effects and risks have become or have become identified to be at that point. So, with that, again, happy to answer any questions, but we're asking or recommending a moratorium at least for the next year and a half or so.
Okay. Any questions of staff?
No question.
Go ahead.
When you say moratorium, do you mean that at the end of that period, it ends? Or is an action necessary by council to, or what's the default, I guess is my question? At the end of that moratorium, what would be the default if no action is taken?
At the pleasure of council. If you would like to make your motion tonight to make it a moratorium until otherwise modified by council, that's the way it would read. So, we would not start using it again unless council directed us to do so. And we would bring back an item to reevaluate our position sometime in late spring of 2021 to have a conversation about this topic.
So, clarification. If we don't, if we do a moratorium, though, doesn't it need to be limited by time, or does it not? I thought, I mean, we can do a ban altogether, which is good until...
Could you do a, to a certain time to be reconsidered for further action?
I'm sure we can, we can craft a policy that will meet your needs, but I think the intention here is, we're not using it again until you give us the go-ahead. And that would be through a formal council action.
And maybe what you can add to the motion is to direct staff to come back with a report in the spring of 2021 as to the effectiveness of these alternative methods, whether there's been more findings made, or more information about the use of that chemical.
And then, for everybody's education, so we did discuss this item a couple of months ago, I think it was...
February.
February, or something like that, yeah. And I think at that point, we went through sort of best practices. So, I assume we've been using those for the time being.
Staff has stopped using Roundup anywhere near where pedestrians or the public would be. No use in parks, no use near sidewalks. Essentially, the only place it's being used now, and I'll look toward our maintenance manager to advise me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's street medians and really hillsides where there's no sidewalks. Very limited uses in a few areas where you wouldn't expect public to come in contact. That's the way we were using it up until about a month ago, when we stopped altogether. And we've been waiting to hear what you say in tonight's meeting.
Okay.
And I think the best practices, you can correct me if I'm wrong, have changed in some of the cities, park districts, things like that, since we met in February.
Many cities have adopted either bans, moratoriums, or modified uses in the last several months. In a quick polling of about a dozen cities that I looked into, about half of them in Contra Costa have stopped using it altogether.
Right. And not to mention the lawsuits have started to pile up more since February as well.
So, the wait-and-see approach is clear. You can see why we're saying maybe just back off on this for the time being and see how things play out. In the meantime, we'll see what we can do to do workarounds with our maintenance techniques. I will remind you, I'm sure you have the speaker cards there, but I know that there's some members of the public that want to comment on this, and I continue to see online activity talking about this particular topic, as well as folks sending emails, so.
And then, one other question. So, what we're obviously talking about is the city's use of the product in city property.
Correct.
So, obviously, there's nothing, nothing that stops private citizens from using it in their yards, and I assume that there's nothing coming from the state in terms of banning it or anything.
That's out of our control right now. We're just talking about, really, our own staff utilizing it for maintenance purposes within the city.
Got it. Councilmember one?
Yep. So, just for clarification purposes, the maintenance department has stopped using it at this point, correct?
Correct.
All right. And there are other, a number of other cities in the county that have also either put in a moratorium, or in fact, have ceased and said they are not going to use it any further, because there's a lot of litigation and things that are going on throughout the whole region that is a direct result of using. I cannot see, I can't go very far on television without seeing some law firm that is soliciting people to come forth if they've had a negative experience. But I'm glad to hear that the city has stopped using it. That goes a long way. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions of staff? Seeing none, let's open up a public comment. I have one speaker card, but if anyone else would like to speak, definitely fill out our speaker card, and I'll call you up. I have Brian Budell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to claim ownership on this issue, because I was the one who first brought this to the city council's attention back in, I believe, early February. I'm happy to see that it's finally getting some consideration, albeit a little bit on the late side. The bad news is, is while Clayton has been considering it, other government agencies have been taking action to protect their citizens. Earlier today, I sent an email to each one of you, a printout of which I have asked to be marked as an exhibit to tonight's proceedings, in which I've provided a list of governmental agencies, both international and domestic, who have moved forward on this issue. That list contains 38 countries who have either banned or otherwise limited the use of glyphosate, and 25 states with numerous cities and governmental agencies within them that have taken such action. Interestingly, one of them is Encinitas, which has outright banned the use of glyphosate. I also find that it's really interesting that Mount Diablo's Unified School District, through a unanimous vote, has completely banned the use of glyphosate on its school properties, as has the East Bay Regional Park District. So, what that means is that unless Clayton adopts a ban or absolutely stops using it, my daughter could potentially be safe while she's at school at Mount Diablo Elementary, but as she walks down the hill, could potentially be exposed to it. Likewise, she would be protected if we go hiking on Black Diamond, but the minute we step out of the city of Clayton, the potential of exposure exists. I understand there's limitations and use on medians and so forth. That's not been my experience. I'm hoping that's changed. I haven't seen it in a while. But what I don't understand is what there is to consider. Glyphosate has been recognized by the state of California as a probable carcinogen, and whether it's defined as probable or certain, there is no denying the fact that there are now in excess of 15,000 lawsuits that have been filed. And Councilman Diaz is absolutely right with respect to the TV things. You can't watch daytime TV without, for any more than a couple hours, without seeing at least half a dozen ads soliciting lawsuits for that. I even saw an infomercial, an hour-long infomercial that was on TV. I didn't watch it, but also soliciting. So, I'm mindful of the fact that this is going to create extra work, and there's probably going to be a few more weeds. But what it really comes down to is, what's more important? The safety of protecting our citizens from cancer, or having to pull weeds and spend some extra time and possibly some money? For my daughter and everybody else's future, I think erring on the, not erring, but taking the position of getting rid of this stuff entirely, as many cities have, is the right way to go.
Thank you. I actually, Mr. Budell, I actually have a question for you. So, I think you had provided a comment to us maybe in May or April about this topic, just in public comment. And you had mentioned in that public comment that the state was considering some sort of ban or something to that effect, and I think you said you would follow up on that.
Yeah, and you know what? That actually turned out to be wrong. The, I'm sure you get these too, as a lawyer. You get the, these little headlines, things, you know, like the Law 360 things. I don't remember if it was that or whatever, but the headline was a little deceiving. It suggested that that's what they were talking about, but then when I got into it, it actually wasn't talking about that at all. It was a different pesticide that they were, they were talking about. I actually meant to send an email to you guys, and honestly, I just forgot.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Uh huh.
I don't have any other speaker cards, but if anyone else would like to address the council, please come on up. Ms. Stanaway.
Ann Stanaway, 1553 Havilland Place, Clayton. My yard is actually the test for this business of keeping weeds out with mulch. I don't get any weeds in my yard, and it's all wood chips that I got from Tree Services. And you're going to say, well, what if the wood chips have disease in them? Will they put, will they, will disease flow over into the plants that are, that the wood chips surround? Well, I think that you need to think about solar irradiation, because solar irradiation in California, and in other places as well, but in California, solar irradiation actually sterilizes the wood chips. So, really, you don't have to worry unless you are in someplace where there's a lot of rain, such as Northern California, where along the coast, where they have a fairly moist climate. However, in the dry and solar irradiated climate that is Clayton, we don't have that kind of problem. So, getting wood chips from the various landscaping companies is going to be great. Also, the city of Clayton might consider getting a chipper of their own. I have a little electric chipper at home, and every single one of my trees that I trim, every fall I trim trees, goes ahead and replenishes the wood chips in my yard. So, it's very good. I would be happy to let the various people know in the city of Clayton that are going to do this, exactly what technique I used. I used a technique that was recommended online by the Bay Area Friendly Project. So, it was not something I dreamed up. It was something that was of recommendation, and I found that it works great. My plants are doing great, and no weeds.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the council for discussion.
Just a clarification here, that this is for, this moratorium would be for the city staff of the maintenance department of Clayton. It would not prohibit homeowners if they so desire to use it at their own home. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I think this, I think this is a no-brainer. Excuse me. A moratorium, certainly, if not an outright ban, is warranted, in my opinion. I know Ms. Stanaway even talks about all creatures, great and small, and I think that we have to protect, as Mr. Budell said, our families and our residents, but all creatures, great and small, that could be affected by this product, not to mention our pocketbooks in the long term. And since this was brought to our attention back in February, and we debated it at that time, there've been several more lawsuits. And as Mr. Budell and Councilmember Diaz said, you can't watch television without seeing 1,000 attorneys wanting to get on board. So, I think, I think this is a no-brainer, so I'm going to support a moratorium.
Okay.
I, I'm supportive as well. I think as long as we get to a place where the default isn't that it resets on its own, and that we have to take action if we want to do something different, then whether we call that a moratorium or a ban is fine with me. You know, I always think that, I try to take a pragmatic approach, and when I, I look at the evidence, it's, the science is somewhat complicated, but the lawsuits are not. And so, purely based on a risk avoidance, a risk avoidance focus, I think that that decision is pretty easy to make. And it's gonna, it's gonna be more work. Sorry about that. But I think it's worth it.
Okay. Vice Mayor Pierce.
Well, I'll just jump in and make a motion that we institute a moratorium beginning immediately on the use of Roundup by city staff for a period of 18 months, and for staff to report back to council and let us know the results, and come back in 18 months for further direction or action.
Second.
So, that's been, let me add a couple of comments too. So, I do see that a number of cities have, have, since February, taken further action, whether either ban or limited. I'm actually glad that our city has been fairly restrictive on it to begin with. I mean, I think we had, when we looked at it in February, you know, we had the best practices that a lot of the cities on the list have, and we've even since then reduced where we apply, apply the product. And so, I'm glad to see that we've already taken steps. It's not that we've snoozed on this up until this point. I do think that there are certainly going to be consequences for not using it, and I think, I think for that reason, for the item to come back to council is the right decision. I think we want to hear what the consequences is, and I think we want our citizens to also see what the consequences is, vice versa. And also, I think 18 months gives us a good enough time to understand what's happening in the legal arena in terms of the lawsuits as well. So, I think we'll have more information from several fronts in 18 months. So, I will be supportive of the motion.
Yeah, the good, the good part about that is that because we've limited our use, hopefully, the negative impact is reduced.
From what I've, from what I've heard from citizens, I'm sure you have too, and like Mr. Sobranti said, our city manager, there, there's a lot of support for this moratorium. People are saying, well, if there're going to be weeds, we can put up a few more weeds to protect our families. And then, I think we also have to take a look at what the costs are going to be long-term as well. But, but again, I'm certainly in favor of this.
Yeah. And just for clarification, I know we already went through it, but this doesn't prohibit private citizens from using the product, or your neighbors using the product. So, there's a, there's a bigger, I don't know how much Clayton residents use the product, but I'm sure it goes off the shelves to some extent. So, there's a bigger issue behind this than other, than city usage as well. Okay. So, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further comment? Seeing none on that motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And no one opposed. And who did the second on that one?
Mr. Diaz.
Yeah, that's right. Okay.
The man on the end of the dais here.
Okay. Very good. So, that passes unanimously, which means we go to item number 10, which is any council member requests for future meetings. Are there any?
I do. In talking with staff, and especially Mr. Sobranti, it has become apparent that we have some weaknesses in our administrative systems and technology. So, I'd like to discuss the existing policy or practice, or establish one for technology refresh among city staff. I think it's an important issue that would improve the quality of life for the staff, as well as efficiency for overall city operations. And I think it's... And I think it, you know, if we establish a policy of periodic refresh, it will likely cost money, but it will be, you know, money well spent.
Okay. Any other items? I have one other item. So November 17 through 23rd is, some cities in the Bay are already recognized this, but it is a week to recognize United Against Hate. There are a number of cities in Contra Costa that already participate in it. I would like to bring that up to our November 5th meeting with a draft resolution to see if there's support from the council members to also participate in that as a, as a city. So I'll work with our city manager and bring forth a resolution for consideration.
Yeah, that was talked about at the mayor's conference. I think that's a good idea.
Anything else? Seeing none, we are then adjourned to our November 5th meeting. Thank you.